Go ahead.
I've talked to the County Minister of Research that the Commission was going to recognize some people here. Well, one, Lieutenant Justice Mullin, he's retiring from the office. Going through the service, um, he's going to be, it is a special last day tomorrow, and he's going to be running for the office of Sheriff also. So, um, I took the on in, this is Smith, he's one of our newest deputies, just got out of Academy. The other one's not in there right now, Ferris is, and you know Cypress and Chief Morris, feeding off which will be leaving us in July. Of course, Ferris is going to be the new pro officer taking just spot out of Oak Hill High School than our nurse K nine officer. So, that's everybody.
Congratulations.
Jess, Jess has been with us a long time, worked with you a long time, I'm excited for him. Um, he can't really talk about it yet because he's still deaf this year, but I can, um, he'd be a fine share for us supporting one hundred percent, so.
Okay, good, thank you, Mike. Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a certificate?
Yeah, I've got a certificate here.
I thought Allison was.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not, Allison probably, I might. Yeah, she always gets something to say. Ruth, what?
Come on, let me help you with this, I'm not, I'm not much on all this, let's walk up here.
I can read it.
Allison, let's read it, okay.
Jess, I didn't even realize, I knew you had done a lot for our county, um, but I didn't realize how much until I'd read this. This, um, write-up, this recognition that Amy put together for us. And it says, recognizing your career in law enforcement and contributions to the citizens of Fayette County. Jess has been a deputy with the Fayette County Sheriff's Department for over twenty years, serving as a supervisor, family court law. Bailiff, detachment commander for both New Haven and Valley Districts. Law enforcement coordinator and trainer for Fayette County Domestic Violence Community Response Team. And as the prevention rescue officer at Oak Hill High School. Now Senior Lieutenant for Fayette County, Jess has obtained various certifications. Including SWAT operator, clandestine laboratory technician, K nine tracking, trailing operator, and TASER instructor. As the pro officer for Oak Hill High School, Jess obviously makes the safety of everyone his priority, but has found time. To assist with the technological upgrades such as the Evolve Express Security Screening System and the renovated Safe School Entrance. The Students Readiness Team, Active Shooter Training, and Alert Emergency Response Training, which includes. Teaching drone safety and responsibilities to the Aerospace Engineering Program. Jess continues to lead and motivate the county's youth outside of law enforcement as a former Little League and current middle school football coach. The Fayette County Commission is grateful to the decades of service Lieutenant McMullin has given to the citizens and especially his students. And an official recognition, we hereby affix our signatures this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-three. And if I were there, I would be clapping.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thanks, Allison.
You're welcome.
Speech. I'm not supporting very loud speech yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Allison.
Mr. Young.
All right. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the property exaggeration presented this morning.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ruthie just might stand in my name this, I would have to.
Yes, did we get his stamp?
I brought Allison, but I didn't write this, I'll get it.
We'll stack yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Vouchers and invoices, did you see anything on them?
Is your interest?
No, no.
Okay.
Ruth, did you see anything on vouchers and invoices?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and invoices and pay our vendors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, are there two sets there?
Yeah, from December sixth.
Uh, two sets of meetings from December sixth. One for the AM meeting, one for the special meeting in PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Estate settlements. You always look at it.
Yeah, uh, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ruths?
We've got the orders from the last meeting, we can restamp those for all of them if you want, or not even fine. Okay, what we're saying is the EMP grant approval, this is a, is it Kevin's grant? Yeah, this is the. I hopefully can stamp this, Tom.
I'll sign it if I have to. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
And what's this for?
Kevin's Emergency Management.
Okay. I'll make a proof, a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
All right, the second one is the P pod grant application. So this has already been signed and submitted, you guys just have to approve it. Not pro tonk, this for twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars, this pays for, helps pay for the litter control officer. Dump dumpsters and trucking, which I think is dump fix.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I move we approve it.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I want to point out that we went from forty thousand pounds to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand pounds. That's the difference in collections since twenty nineteen.
Wow.
And then. But Cypress.
Yes.
You just have to approve the new.
Did you send that to Allison?
She saw it.
Okay.
Weren't you here when we were?
I motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to hold up the new logo, Tom? Put it towards the game, force of hammer, which you saw.
You had it, it's fine, yeah.
That's our, uh, our new logo, and we had an excellent person take care of it for us, so.
All right, well, I like this, next, general school transfer, this is Tom's favorite.
Yeah. I motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Allison, all this stuff, you can approve us staying in your name?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now there is a letter. So this is a letter to the Department of Highways about the signs on the overlooks on Route sixty. Uh, people have pointed out that they're all overgrown. So either basically take down the signs or put them over. They requested you guys send a letter to the Department of Highways.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no.
We lost.
Yeah.
All right, next is the Fire Coordinator and Deputy OEM Director.
Okay, I want to go ahead and make a motion to, uh, approve the post of Deputy OEM Director job description.
Do we have a?
Second.
We've never had one in there.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, we'll just have to modify Kevin's.
Then the other discussion, and it really don't, a lengthy discussion, I'm going to say a few words. And, um. The, um. Josh, you've been working on budgets for the fire department, correct?
Not just me.
Okay, I mean, okay, not, not just you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, but it's, and I under- I under- I understand that. Those are all individual fire departments. Right. How many of them do you have? Fourteen? So you just lapped two up. Okay. You said something to me about. Having some kind of description for a, I don't know whether it's a fire coordinator or something like a fire coordinator.
We just talked about duties that they, you know, needed for. The more things added and maybe the, haven't been done in the past that had to it. You know, it should be done anyway.
Okay, okay, I mean, basically, that's what I was talking about, you, you're revamping, you're talk, you talked to me about revamping the. Coordinator positions, job descriptions, that's basically what you're talking about then, okay, all right.
Like what items, Josh?
Such as, I mean, I've been on an apartment for, four years or so, never been fit tested for a SCBA mask, I mean, that's something that. You know, fire coordinator should be on station to state. Don't probably, but I think if you gain, you know, if your weight changes twenty pounds, you're supposed to be fit tested.
If you have, if you have any major dental work, if, if, like gain or loss.
You know, you're talking crucial, you know, you know, like saving stuff right there, the needs done that hasn't been done. And I mean, I don't know how far before me that it had been done.
Okay, yeah.
I meant one thing, I mean, I, like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I didn't.
I didn't bring a list paper with me.
Right, right, no, 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 I, I, I mean, I, I didn't ask you to because it, this wasn't what this is about, really, but I wanted everybody aware, be aware of. Y'all have been working on something, right? Okay, well, at this is, at this time, what I would like to do is. Is, um, if y'all plan on doing something like that, I'd like to give you a chance to do it, but what I wanted to do is this letter. Ruth, could you read the letter? It's right here. Oh, well, I would read it briefly, and what I want to do is. Well, I'll let her read the letter, then I'll, I'll, I may, I may talk this, a few more minutes about this.
It says, as discussed during the Fayette County Commission meeting held on November second, twenty twenty-two, the position of fire coordinator is not mandate, mandated. By West Virginia State Code, and in Fayette County is a product of previous fire levy agreements between the county and the fire departments. Your services were retained during that meeting on a contract basis to serve as interim fire coordinator until such time that a permanent coordinator was hired or an alternative arrangement was made to cover the necessary duties. At this time, the commission is in agreement that the services you provide as interim fire coordinator are now under needed and give notification that the contract will be canceled effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We thank you for your time as interim fire coordinator and for your services to citizens, citizens of Fayette County as a firefighter.
Now. This gives you to the thirty-first, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a job description to present something to the commission. Because I'm going to make a motion to approve this letter that after January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Chris Shanks. Uh, is, no longer be interim fire coordinator.
Did you motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Josh, I have one request. Can you give us an impact when you present this to the commission, I guess in February? Or maybe January? Can you give us an impact of what it would be on the smaller fire departments? The ones that are outside of a municipality of trying to get everything coordinated and everything done? Okay, appreciate that. Now, when is, uh, when's Becky going to retire?
I think in, in the January.
End of January? Has, has she said that, could we consider putting her as a part-time to try to help with book bills and stuff?
She did, she did tell me that she mentioned that, that she would be about. Ruth, but she hadn't heard anything about.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
She had mentioned the name that she said, she told me that she turned everything, that she would be willing to work part-time.
Okay, all right, that's just something else for us to think about, okay, thank you.
He's supposed to be here for the nine fifteen, Anthony, and so we're just skipping. Uh, the next is to approve as a CBB Park Representative, um, which Becky has requested be Brian Good as the County Representative.
Well, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is Brian Good, Park Director, his six-month probationary period is up tomorrow.
Brian, how's the, uh, how's the winter wonderland doing?
We're wide open. I don't, I don't think, I think that job, you can explain what goes on, you know, I think we all kind of think you know, we're going to go down there on Saturday night, but it is, it's intense, you know, we have fifty-nine people coming in there. Average, and everybody that comes in, they'll spend about a dollar seventy, it seems like, it's what, that you look at your money and stuff like that. Everybody's coming in and rolling through the, you love the same stuff, they go to the bill buddy, they go to the, the food, and they really just do laps, and cars will stay there for two hours, do laps. You know, so we're doing about four hundred and some cars on Saturday night right now. And then on the, even though the night when it was snowy, there's still thirty some cars that rolled in that night, last night, almost a hundred bars, you know, it's, it's going great, people are very happy, they're great, they're back to it, like.
Yeah, as closer it gets to Christmas, the build, the more the buildup will be there too, so.
We were there Saturday, and it was literally bumper to bumper, and it was all the way down where you go up the hill to go towards the park, the traffic stopped there, and it was just constant.
Yeah, I've been stuck in that too.
Our, our goal is not having one to throw the other way down there, so we've been having two guys, we're doing, the other night, they're doing two cars every thirty, that's the first two of them. You know, it's like that, it's, we don't want to walk the road for any, where you're possibly going down, it's a, it's a, it's an easy goal, but we're.
Well, I've heard several positive comments, so congratulations to you and your crew again, uh, I think you guys have done well.
Is Anthony, well, miss, don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm still worried about longer pathways.
I'll text him, Allison, did you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, I mean, Ruth has been, um, updating me regularly on Brian's performance at the park, which has been stellar. And we had discussed when we hired him, um, doing a salary review at the six-month period, um, to consider a raise, assuming the probationary period went well, like I expected it would. Um, so I'm going to move that we increase the salary from, I think it's forty-two thousand a year right now to forty-five effective next pay period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Just keep rolling.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, he's got all kinds of new ideas, so.
Good.
Um, so the next item was a letter to GST about the website, and Wes drafted a letter, Allison, did you look at it?
Yeah, I reviewed it last meeting.
Well, I motion, I motion to approve.
And this is just for clear, clarity, this is because GST has not delivered on a website that we've been paying for, for about a year now. Um, so this is a letter reaching out to them, asking them to make, make it right. So, did you move, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the last item is the, is the hotter grant, it's, um.
High-intensity drug trafficking area.
Thanks, Allison.
You're welcome.
Basically, your acceptance of the grant for the next January to December of next year.
I move we approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We might have to sign a couple of these.
Well, I'll sign if I have to.
Yeah. I'm still waiting on Anthony.
He signs well when he stands up.
And then when I stand up, yeah.
Since we're talking about dilapidated properties, how many more have we had added to the map? How many more dilapidated properties have we added to the map?
The last, I changed, there were three hundred, but some of the municipalities, I don't, I don't have any.
I thought it was three hundred, it's not three.
Yeah, there was three hundred, but some of those I might have.
Oh, okay.
They were not legitimate.
Okay. Are you, are you talking about the one in Oak Hill?
No, there was one in Bay of Hill.
Is there one in Bay of Hill too? Oh, really?
Got a dilapidated map, someone has tagged a memorial building that needs to come down.
Good thing about it, you can look on the map and see pretty much where it's at.
Yeah.
Even if they, even if they don't send you a picture.
Yeah, and hopefully they're gonna, a man is going to send me a report, like in a spreadsheet, I can separate it by city, no, how many we have. So while we're waiting on Anthony, do you want Cypress to explain where they blow down these?
Might as well, yeah.
I'm gonna try.
Waiting on him to discuss now.
Yeah, I'm going to try to pull up the.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay, yeah. I didn't know if I missed something.
After next week, well, does it not?
Well, no, I have the surgery on the twenty-seventh, I don't get the device until the twentieth of January. And then I have to go back the twenty-sixth for an adjustment, and then in February, March, and April. So.
That's a lot of trips.
Okay, let's see if I can remember how to do things.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we're going to get them.
Thank you.
Can people see it? Let's see, hang on a second.
Can you, Allison, hello, Allison?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't see it, but.
I know, I'm going to get it for y'all.
I'm just, I'm going to give it to you, really.
I don't know what it's doing, I haven't done this in so long.
What was all today? The opera becoming.
I keep thinking it's.
About aggravated because it won't. See this?
Now, I'll just.
Okay, yeah, you do that, and I'll keep working on it.
See, it's, it's in here somewhere. Two, three, oh, I gotta hear, it's just not reporting color, but.
It won't bring it over onto the screen for some.
Well, as long as everybody else can see it, I guess it's all bad.
We can see it.
You didn't like the colors anyway.
There we go.
You want, yeah, there we go.
You wanted it more colorful.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So when thinking about Fayette County, normally people just think about the bridge, but often that leaves out eastern and western line communities. Um, so really, that was my focal point of how it was originally, the whole county. Um, the bottom clearly is river, I mean, we have a major river that runs right smack that in the middle of our county from one end to the other. Uh, and then you notice the mountains, um, it's not just two mountains there, they're divided, they're in different colors. That's going to represent in our major mountain range, we've got Slow Mountain, Golly Mountain, Deep Water Mountain, and then, um. The back is, and you have Berry Mountain, over the thing, and then the bridge, and then the bridge, you'll see, there's exactly ten vertical spokes. Those ten spokes, um, represent the ten municipalities within the county. Met Ridge, Anstead, God of Ridge. Metres, Montgomery, Fayetteville, Oak Hill, Mount Hope, Tack, and Vernon.
Correct.
So, try and get. The whole county in there, um, so that everybody can be proud of, not just the folks up here.
Well, I'd like to say that you did a good job.
I agree.
It represents the county very well, and, um, I think you should be proud of your work.
Now, I concur. All right.
Brought us into this century.
Now, the, now the, uh. Nine fifteen, is that Angel? That's Anthony?
First, my apologies, dealing with. It's supposed to be a trial.
Yeah.
Things happen.
I'm sorry, um, so Lapperty, here, here's the situation we have with, with, um, dilapidated property. Um, when we were here before, we were advised that the, um. First, we're wanting to sign a voluntary consent to allow us to, um. Demolish and dispose of the structure of the property, so I met with the, um, wife of, who was represented to be the owner. And I also did a title search on the property, and basically what I discovered was, is the person that we had listed as the owner is in fact. A trustee, he is not, he's not the owner, so essentially, when you go back and look at what happened, um, the parents own the property. He left the property to a trust in his will. Mr. Lapperty was designated the trustee, the will specified that he was to use that property for the benefit of. His two brothers, who are the two sons that are the, um, decedents, the testator. So, initially, and, and looking at the will, the trustee was given the authority to manage the property and sell the property, I was. Actually, okay with him signing off on the consent, so then when I met with, um, his wife, it was determined that he lacks competency. She told me she had a power of attorney, she didn't have a power of attorney, she had a medical surrogate, which basically gives her the ability to. Make medical decisions on behalf of her husband, um. I talked with her a little bit more about the two sons that are the beneficiaries of the trust, one of them is deceased. He died with no children, died unmarried, so his interest in the property would pass to the two brothers. The brother that is the other beneficiary of the trust is alive, but according to the wife lacks competency. So, essentially. I think we're going to need. Uh, a court order to demolish the property. So the way, you know, the county commission, I mean, the, I mean, here's the issue, we have other houses that we can deal with, so we can put this one on the back burner. Or if the county commission wants to go forward, it will require filing a civil suit. Simply get, I think, court, it's not, it's not going to be an adversarial, um, action, it'll simply be a situation where we have to have the court's approval because of the. Ownership interests of the two surviving brothers and the fact that they lack competency. Um, but, there's no provision in the West Virginia Code that. that covers the payment of legal fees to a guardian at life for the two brothers, so that, that's, that's the issue. Um, the law requires the guardian at life to be appointed, we don't pay of paying for that through the state, so what's, and all likely to gonna happen is the court will order the county commission to pay the legal fees for the guardian at life, and I can't. I made an estimate in my email. Whether or not that estimate ends up being accurate is anybody's guess. But I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission, and, and like I said, I mean, we could either go forward with the civil suit, or we could direct our attention elsewhere. Um, because it's not like we have a shortage of dilapidated structures that we can work on, so. But, you know, I'll leave it up to the commission as far as which route we go.
Yeah.
Well, when Anthony told me about this, when he told me about this, I mean, I, I, I think we ought to just wait a little while, because he did give the lady, you know, the information she needed to apply for, um, to be appointed guardian conservator, um, for the estate or for the people involved in the estate, and, and she seemed, she seemed to be interested in doing that once she learned that her, her documentation was not sufficient to, to provide for all of the responsibilities she had taken on, so I think if we give it some time, she may, she may be appointed at no expense to anybody, and, and then we can move forward.
Well, A- Allison, just to, just to let you know, if, let's assume for the sake of argument, she files a guardianship conservatorship petition and is appointed as guardian conservator, we're still gonna have to go in front of the circuit judge to get approval because of the lack of competency on part of, um, pretty much everyone that has an interest in this property, uh, based on what, what's been told to me. Uh, now, I, I will say that if she's appointed conservator and she comes in and says, I support this, then I think it'll make it that much easier, but, so I, I, I think Allison's approach makes sense in waiting to see. Um, and, and I did, I gave her the, if you get on the Supreme Court's website, you can download the forms, I did that, handed them off to her, and um, kinda gave her a quick rundown of what needed to be done, and she indicated she would pursue that, but if she's conservator and supports it, it will, um, it, it will help us in the long run, so, I mean, my, my suggestion would be the delay, and like I said, the bigger issue for me is, it's not as though we have a shortage of houses or structures that we need to deal with.
No, I've gave, I've gave some people out here the, uh, consent. Okay, if you gave me too, so we should start getting, hopefully have some consent in the.
And to let the commission know, uh, and I'm, I'm, at this point, when we reach the point of asking people to sign consents, I'm doing a title search just to make sure that the person who's signing the consent has the ownership interest needed to consent. Um, because of, of course, you know, in, in the Lapperty case, this gentleman was listed on the tax ticket, when looking at the tax ticket, he appeared to be the owner, but then when you started digging into it, it became obvious that he was a trustee and not an owner, but just to make sure we get the right person, um, I'll just go ahead and do a title search on these properties to make sure we've got the right individual.
Were we able to locate the one gentleman that?
Um, we had a private detective who, it's, we'll see, will advise that he has checked five or more addresses and has not been able to locate this individual now. There are, there is a pending criminal case in Oak Hill Municipal Court. There was a hearing scheduled, um, he did not appear. Oak Hill hasn't issued an arrest warrant for him, but that case is still floating around out there, and our private investigator is aware of that, and essentially, um, I think if he doesn't show up at the next opportunity, they are going to issue a bench warrant. Um, the other property owner was served twenty days, has come and gone, he has not filed an answer, so I can get a default against him. Um, but I can't get a default against the other property owner, I actually, um, two of the adjoining property owners, I called them and gave them my cell phone number, and I said, if you see him over there, call me, and if I can get our private detective over there, or a sheriff's deputy over there to serve him, um, I'll do it, um, some people, I, I, I think we've done everything we've we've done everything we can to find him, um. And at some point, you know, the issues he's got in Oak Hill Municipal Court are gonna kinda force his hand, I mean, he's gonna, you know, they issue a bench warrant for his arrest, um, that will certainly help him. And at some point, they'll do that, I don't know why they did it when he missed the first hearing, but they didn't, but I was, was my understanding, if he doesn't show up for the second time, they send out a notice that they are going to do that, so we basically have everything in place to try to get him served and just have guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
So since y'all are acting to the voluntary whatever for these demolitions, can we not put something on like Facebook or our website that owners can?
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I'm gonna put it, I'm putting, in fact, I've got it on mine, I just haven't made my website live yet.
I'm gonna.
I've got the form and everything on there.
Okay, is your, that your Facebook page is up, is it not on the?
No, it's not up yet, my Facebook page, my number's not up.
I can link to that from the prosecutor's Facebook page and my Facebook page.
So if we have a form, I need to put it on there. And then it'll be out there. And it was three hundred and ninety, John, I just looked.
Three hundred and ninety?
No, I was gonna just count them.
Yeah, but I, I'm pretty sure we're gonna push five hundred or more.
No, I, I'm gonna tell you, there, uh, you know, I, I asked all municipalities to use this map and put them on there.
And Tom, I take it you were able, when I re-sent it to you, you were able to open it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I can get it, you're welcome, I'll get it to Amy if, if you wanna have it put, I can forward it, do you need PDF or Word, or does it?
Um, just if you'll send me the word.
Okay, well, I'll send it to you, and then maybe, maybe you can get it on the.
And be honest with you, I.
Are we gonna do an application for them to fill out?
Uh, basically, it's what I prepared for Tom, it's kind of a combination, um, application, and.
So if a citizen wants to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's for the citizens.
They basically, what it is, is it gives the property information, and it gives the county or its agents or employees the right to go on the property to assess the need to de- demolish and destroy or get bids, and then assuming the property qualifies, then we'll do the.
That's the one I told you about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I said, we got three hundred and ninety, but.
Yeah, yeah. See, I. Yeah, see, John, I asked, I've, I've been asking municipalities, and I've got a couple more, I gotta try to contact, I tried to contact Oak Hill, and they won't call me back, uh, the mayor and, and, uh, Councilman Lawrence will make a meeting with me to, I was gonna talk to him about and give him the form, but it seems like they don't wanna talk to me, so.
But see, but we can't do anything in the municipalities.
If they want to. Yeah, we can. I mean, Anthony, will you? I mean, if.
We, we cannot unilaterally go into a municipality and demolish and dispose of. If a municipality invites us and asks us, I believe we can. But, you know, we can't just show up and say, well, here we are, we're Fayette County, we're gonna come into your municipality and take care of this, but, but, you know, if we're invited by the municipality, I believe that we can do it.
In fact, Michael Taylor's, um, his interpretation is the same thing that he said also.
But the key here is just being invited into the municipality, and I would feel, uh, better if it was put on the agenda at the civic council meeting, and the council voted on the resolution. Uh, be able to, on the authorization to come in and deal with this, and I, I, I think the resolution specific as to the property.
If.
Or an MOU, are you talking resolution per property, or do we wanna do an MOU about?
I feel, I feel better if we actually had a resolution for each piece of property.
Well, I mean, if they, if they ask us to come in, if they, I mean, to me, it's not a, you know, if they ask us to come in.
Uh, and I, and I know, I know this issue's come up in the past, and I know prior prosecutors have rendered a different opinion, and I most respectfully disagree with, with my predecessors on this, and, and I'm, I'm assuming why, that's why you're asking, John.
Yeah, that, I, yes, I mean, some municipalities cleaning up the houses, I mean, Oak Hill, Fayetteville, they're, they're one of them, and they're. Smithers, um, but then some municipalities need help. Meta Bridge, Golly Bridge.
And like I said, the key here is we can't, we can't go in on our own, but we are invited and given license to do stuff by municipalities, I think we're connected.
And then, of course, we can't do anything in the national park area either, like going down through Thurmond.
Well, they're supposed to be working on those themselves, according.
Yeah, there was something out, there was something. In fact, there, there was, there was something in an article I read, or forwarded to me or something, said they're cleaning up the properties now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can't remember exactly where I seen that at, but.
I think Allison sent it to us.
Oh, did she?
I sent.
Okay.
And they're having a public hearing, I think, about the property.
Yeah, in January.
Maybe the tenth or something like that, I can't remember exactly.
Is it, are, are we, are we, are we done?
I think so.
I'll make a motion to dismiss.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Dismiss, whatever.
Second.
We'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Hallelujah.
Next down September that we're gonna fall for.
Tom, James says.